Howdy, everybody. Today is Thursday, July 29, 2021. Thanks for being here. The time is 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM, and we are finally at the final budget workshop. There is a quorum present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And before we get begin, let's remember that every short-term decision has long-term effects and consequences, and that long-term change for the better can only happen with our collaboration and consensus. So, thank you very much. Citizens' appearance. Do we have anybody signed up to speak tonight?
No, sir.
All right. I'm going to forego with the reading of the stuff there. Number three, final review, assessed valuation.
Mayor, turn it over to Jennifer.
You know, I was looking. I said, wait, well, wait a minute. Ms. Miller.
All right. If you look at page two in your packet, we have received the certified values, and we did show a 4.15% increase. So, we added 348,201,753 to the value of the city of Cop Hill. So, we are sitting at 8,737,297,796. We lost 8.11% from the preliminary that we received back in May, and that's been our highest percentage decline since 2007.
So, Jennifer, you said you lost 8%. Does that mean you went from 12% down to 4%?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, that's the final value. If you look at page three, this gives you our breakdown. And it's very similar to what it was a week ago, only that 15.19% is coming from new construction. We have 42.34 coming from reappraisals. 42.41 is from business personal property, and then ag land, it went up to .05. And we probably had it categorized wrong in the previous presentation. So, another way to look at that is our increase was 21.37% came from residential, 42.73% came from business personal property, and 35.85 came from commercial. So, the majority of the increase is coming from our commercial sector. The decrease in value from what we showed you last week was a little over 54 million, and the majority of that came from the residential area. It was 31 million of the 54. Commercial decreased 21, and then our business personal property, which is the most volatile of the group, only decreased almost 3 million.
Do you know if that was due to protest or just due to new appraisals that were coming in?
That we don't know. I haven't had a chance to actually go through the roll and look at it. Now, we do still have some value under protest. I think it was 119 million in Dallas County alone is still under protest. The split between commercial and residential didn't change a whole lot from last week. It's still 55, 45%. And then, just the comparison is previously, it's been 58%, and now we're down to the 55%. So, we are seeing this switch from residential to commercial. And then, we have seen the decline in growth rate in the last four years. And this year was a little bit below the 4.27 to the 4.15. All right. Page four. This is going to show our split between the general fund and the debt service fund. So, because of the growth, we did not have to shift as much pennywise from general fund to debt service. It was almost one penny that had to shift, though, because of the 2021 debt issuance that we had earlier this year. So, in total, the 4.15% growth resulted in an additional revenue of a little over $2 million that was split between the general fund and the debt service fund. Now, I want to say one thing. We have not received the official tax rate calculations yet, but the unofficial numbers are. Our no-new revenue rate is .551656. Our voter approval rate is .583494. The average home value is 411,167, and one penny on the average home value is worth And then, one penny on the tax rate in total is 873,730. The value number, we can say, is correct. It's just whether or not the no-new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, that all depends on whether they've given refunds that we didn't know about, whether or not there were some excess collections that we were unaware of, and we're still waiting on that. But we should be fairly close to the actual rates we receive from Dallas County Tax Office. So, does anyone have any questions over the split, the property values, and the split of the tax rate, and how we're accounting for all of that?
Could you read the no-new revenue rate again?
Okay. The way we calculated it, it was .551656.
In the past, I know that we've always used like a crazy number, like 99.98% of the estimated collections, and I noticed that you've gone up to 100% now.
Yeah. That's because that's what Dallas County used.
Okay.
When we switched over to them, we had to go to the 100%. That's why I'm saying there's probably not a whole lot of excess collections because All right. If you want to go to page five. That's our debt service walk forward. And the only change that was made to that was we previously showed that we were going to take $38 out of fund balance. We're now taking 35, just because of rounding on the tax rate. That's the only change that has been made to the debt service walk forward. Does anyone have any questions on debt?
That's $38, not 38,000.
Did I say thousand?
No.
Oh, no, that's $38.
Okay, thank you.
Because if you look, the year before, we took quite a bit. So, we're not taking as much this time. And if no questions, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tean to go over your general fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm going to cover the changes between what was presented last Thursday to tonight for the general fund revenues and expenditures. And first, the only revenue change is the change in property tax, the property tax revenue category, which is the increase of about 2 million, as presented by Ms. Miller. The only change in expenditures is the increase in the library salaries for the positions needed to expand the hours at the library that was requested by Council. So, the net impact of these two changes in revenue is that revenues are greater than expenditures by $482,746, rather than expenditures exceeding revenues by about 1.5 million. Okay? Are there any questions on those changes? As far as the water sewer fund and the special revenue funds that were presented last Tuesday, there were no changes made to those funds. And then, for the fund balance walk forward, the only change that we made is that, as requested, the 80,000 for Metro Crest Capital Campaign was added to the assigned section.
Who is that? Which panel?
That's on page 15. Thank you.
I take it you're trying to get back over us?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Council, any comments, questions? I'm going to look over the numbers a little bit.
Because I certainly didn't follow something. So, like, I thought you said 55 cents was no-new.
No-new revenue from the prior year.
Okay. And then, and we're capped at 3.5%, right? We can only have 3.5%.
Right. And that's the voter approval rate. So, we could go to 583494 without having an election.
Okay.
And then, this is proposing a 58.
Got it. Okay. I misunderstood. I originally was thinking you were saying the 55 was the cap, and now it's like, I wasn't clicking. So, that makes sense. Thank you.
So, Don, that's where you get into the case that we could, if we were trying to hold things even, we could need to, just to go back to the voters, to keep the tax rate constant.
Right.
And we came very close to doing that this time.
You said it was 58.
583494.
Okay. Real close, yeah. Or we would have to adjust the rate down.
Or to go down.
Match whatever.
That's correct.
Okay.
Jennifer, you were talking about this represented 41.12 cents per hundred evaluation?
On the average home, one penny is worth $41.
That was based on the average home?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is the average home still based around 400,000?
It's 411,167.
Thank you.
It's actually gone up.
About $5,000. It was like 406 last year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And keep in mind, those evaluations are done January 1st, and anything that we've seen happen this year, is it going to show up until next year?
Kevin?
So, I know you said, I would think that 8% decrease is the largest since 2007.
Yes.
Based on page two.
Yes.
Understand, there's, you know, protests, you know, things like that. Are those the main drivers of those reductions? Or, I just want to make sure I understand how that piece works, how we start here, and then how that valuation drops.
Yeah. What they, they set the preliminary rate back in May. They work the abatements as if they were the 2020 value. They work free port, what they have in hand, they work those, and then they estimate any of those that they have not worked. And then, the rest is appeals and protests.
Got it. And so, and so, and I want to make sure I get this piece right. So, the free port, I know that there's that piece there. Is that personal property tax, is that the same as the free port thing? I want to make sure that I get that, because that's a, I know that's a kind of different thing there.
Yeah. Free port goods are those that are brought into the state and just held here and shipped out within 170 days.
That's what it was, okay.
Yeah. They're not taxed at all.
Okay. They're not taxed at all. And you said the personal property has the most.
The BPP, yes. That is so volatile. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down. But this time, it didn't go down as much as we thought it would.
Got it. Very good. All right. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
So, on the fund balance walkthrough, just to, I think I'm going to be stating the obvious, but at one point, we had talked, or I think it was mentioned, that we have a couple of these funds that are assigned for the 3334 implementation, and that's basically where we would fund the deficit that we were planning on having on revenues or expenses, on the original proposal, right? We were just, we would fund it out of there. So, I see, let's see. So, what we're saying now, the difference in the original proposal and the one we got now is actually the unreserved, undesignated actually is bigger because we were net, we basically revenues meet expenses, correct? Is that?
That's correct.
So, the difference is in just the unrestricted.
But what that also does is, since you're now in a positive, that sales tax that we were going to use can now go out another year.
Okay. Will it still be assigned or ready to be used in the future?
It'll be reserved and then used, you know, like we were showing three years, now it can go out four.
Got it. Okay.
that we have here are? Over the next, in there still, there's still some valuation of contested properties?
Yes. There's like 119 million that's being contested in Dallas County. So, it's even more than that. 119 is like what we have put on the books. We recognize about 70% of the total that they're saying is in protest. So, if they start settling it at 50%, then we start losing value. But if they start settling at 80%, then we're adding a little bit of value. We get, every month, we get a supplement, and it tells us how to adjust those accounts to determine the value. And then, in July, when we start calculations, we start and we have to recalculate the prior year before we start applying any of the tax rates, so we can see where are we starting today and then moving forward.
I know last year, we had to base our budget on estimated final numbers or something like that?
Yes.
Because the cop trailer didn't. So, these are the certified final values?
These are final values. We're just waiting on the actual calculations from Dallas County Tax Office.
Thank you.
Yeah. Both entities have certified their values. So, we've got good property numbers.
Kevin?
What's the timeline on that final piece, when everything is kind of settled out and stuff that you and Mayor Mays were just talking about? What's the timeline for that being?
We get one every month.
Until the end of next year, basically?
Yes. I mean, what we do is, we get the new tax roll on July 25, and they say, you start today with what your values were last year, and bring them forward, and then you start going forward.
Government may have just made my head sad. So, thank you.
We offered everyone the opportunity to come watch us do this last week.
So sad I missed.
Yes, I bet you were.
I just wanted to highlight that, you know, even though it's told that these are final values, they're really not. I mean, it's subject to change. Not badly, but, you know, it's not like it's going to be down to the penny a year from now.
Oh, no. Probably October 31st, we'll have a change, because they'll send through a supplement. Whatever they've settled, if there's court cases, we'll get those settled.
And so, you do come in and ask for a budget amendment periodically?
Yes.
Which is, and you'll see those coming up?
We do one at the end of the, well, after we've closed the fiscal year and have the annual audit, we'll bring one. And then, we'll bring one in late August, early September as a cleanup.
Got it. Thanks for walking through that.
Mark, I see a question starting to come out there.
No?
No questions. Oh, okay.
From a process standpoint, what will happen is, the team will finalize the document. It will be published August 5. But August 5.
That's next week, Thursday.
And then, on August 10th, that's the budget that's presented to the public, public hearing, and that goes to your eventual vote that particular evening. So, that's the process from here.
All right. Kevin?
I am understanding correctly that we're going to get the, it'll be the public hearing, and then we vote at the same meeting, at the same night?
Yes. And there'll be another agenda item also. If we collect one more dollar in property tax revenue than we did the year before, we have to have a revenue ratification agenda item, and you just acknowledge, yes, we know we collected more in property taxes.
Understood.
So, since we did collect a dollar more, we will be having that hearing. It took me a minute to put two and two together. I'm sorry.
Well, we've even decreased the tax rate, but even though we've done that, we've collected one more dollar, we have to have, say, we're increasing property taxes.
Oh, that's that, that's the amount that you have to publish?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, the actual motion has to be worded a certain way, and we'll put it in your agenda item, how to word that motion.
Anybody have anything else? Well, it said the next item was general discussion, but I think that's pretty much what we've been doing, so. Any comments from the city manager?
No.
All right.
I did have a question. You know, last time when we actually talked about the, I guess, the request for the funding from the general, the hotel occupancy tax, and I read this too, and I'm not going to argue or whatever, but anyway, but if that's the case, and the point that I was trying to make at that time is, if that's the case, and that's all that we could use it for, and we are legitimately using it for, without having the repercussion of later on coming back saying, we used it wrong and take it out of the general fund to replenish it, if that's the case, I'm okay with going back and giving them the money that they asked for, because we really don't have much use for that HOT tax other than for those uses. And we already have 500,000 collected, which is going to get, it's going to get bigger. So, my only issue was, I did not want to run into what we have to replenish that fund from the general funding. So, if, again, if, you know, if we're okay, if we're sure about not having to go in and refund it, replenish it from the general fund, I'm okay with going back and giving them the money they want back. I know Cop Hill Arts Council withdrew their application, but if that's even connected with this, that's.
The foundation.
Arts foundation, right. And that's it. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about what is and what isn't, both sides of the aisle, before the Arts Center came about. But it's there, and it is part of the way that we can fund it to make sure that it works. And if the fund is there that we can use it, I'm okay asking them to come back with the application and trying to provide some support that way.
Just for clarification, it was the Arts Foundation, because they wanted to do an analysis to work with the other agencies. And through our conversations, by the way, Penelope's presenting on the 10th, is that right?
Yes.
So, she'll be there on the 10th, just to kind of talk about what's going on. And my conversations with her, I think there's a better way to go about it as far as, I mean, it's still funding, but it wouldn't necessarily go with them. It would be something that we could do internally through the Arts Center, because it involves those other entities. That way, it doesn't get into who's in charge and that kind of stuff. But to your question, the way we set up the 4,000 for the orchestra, the corral?
Corral.
For the corral, it's there. We just had the caveat that they would, if they do go forward, they would basically produce receipts, and we would reimburse them. So, that's the way you have it set up now.
Right. And all I'm saying is, with the understanding that we're not going to have to take it out of the general fund to replenish it, I'm okay going back and giving them what they're asking for, because we don't really have much to do in terms of using this fund for anything else.
I'm okay using the funds for the study that they want. I think Mike's point was, it's difficult to have a volunteer group go out and try to hire the study that they want done. It's much better to have it done through the staff, which is the way that it's going to be arranged to be done. So, we can, if we need to do a budget amendment later for the, for the.
I think I was talking about two different things.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm talking about the.
The corral.
Are you talking?
They asked for the 8,000.
Right.
And y'all split it up.
So, are you talking about corral or the?
The corral and everything in general, what we can use the HOT tax for. All I'm saying is that, with my concern of not having to, you know, making sure that we're not having to replenish the funds by the general fund. If that, if we're sure about that, then go back and just give them what they're asking for, because we don't really have much of use of this fund for anything else.
Which workshop was that in?
First one. Yellow tab.
Yellow tab. Thank you. That helps. Yellow tab helps a lot.
Uh-oh. Not so confident anymore.
I can see color.
It's the service.
Oh, no, it is the red tab. It's the red tab. Sorry.
Your buyer.
That's right. Yellow was crazy.
Their request was on to page six.
All right. This is another one that had my notes on it, though. We did change the corral.
Yeah, we put the whole eight in, we just split it four and four.
And didn't we do the same thing for the Y?
That was because it was a one-time gift, not because we were.
Should be a 20 and a 10 split on the Y.
But that's in general fund.
That's not HOT.
That is correct.
All right. So, guys, discussion on the corral then?
Well, for what it's worth, I think it's $4,000 or so, but I'd sort of liked the control because they were unsure whether or not they were going to do the streaming, and that's what it was specifically requested for. So, I'm okay with the procedure we got set up where they were fine giving it to them. They just come and if they spend the money, then we reimburse them. On the flip side, it's $4,000, so if we did it the other way, it wouldn't be the end of the world either, so. But it did make sense, because they were unsure. They weren't confident. That's what they would then use it for.
Yeah. I would agree with Don. It's mainly, I, you know, I love the fact that, you know, we have the ability to give them all the money, but it was mainly based on the presentation that they were unsure if they were going to go down that route or not. So, I think the way it is set up just gives that, you know, if they need it, it's there, and if they don't, then.
Accountability.
So, it's not like they're not going to get the money. So, if they need it. All I'm saying is, go back and if they're asking for it, then buy on me, and we can't even put anything else, so.
Well, that's the way it's set up now, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Well, I was just going to say, I wasn't here for the presentation, but I remember what they've done in the past, and as it's being presented right now, like, we can't use it for anything else, but that's not going to say next year, we're not going to have other requests, and that money will still be there, and we can use it for those.
All right, then I am going to forego reading of the rules and regulations for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There being no further business before the council, we are adjourned at 6:32 PM. Okay. We failed to make one announcement?